So I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's Wednesday, November eighteenth. The time is one oh three P M. We'll now open it up for visitor comments. If you have a comment, you can raise your hand. Matt can see you. I can't. And he will. We'll give that just a second here to see if there's any visitor comments.
Um, I thought, um, is Joan there? Joan was logged on earlier.
She.
Joan has, Joan had a comment. Now, I talked to her last week and she had a comment. So unless she's just stepped away from her computer waiting for us to start.
I can see if I can get her attention.
There I am.
Hi, Joan.
Hi. Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Um, I, this is totally informative for the council because, um, I, I know that, I know that the mayor is familiar with Connect St. Helens. I don't know if any of you have, have, had any dealings with Connect St. Helens, but it is a group we have been meeting. It is a formal group with informal intentions. That's what I like to say. Because we're, it, we are going to see where it goes, which the intent of the group is to connect St. Helens better, organically, if that makes sense to anyone. But we have a campaign going right now and it's a re- using of the campaign signs. And this is a sample of one. This was, I don't even know who's sign this was anymore. Just doesn't matter. That's the point. And it says, we belong, and it has the, Connect St. Helen symbol, which we're hoping will become familiar throughout town. And it's, it's just a, group of belonging. And it has been difficult. It's hard to reach out and connect in this environment, as you all know. But we are trying to do as much as we can with our limited, abilities, I guess we should say. I, I really would encourage any of you that would like a sign on your front lawn, just to say that we want to connect better in St. Helens. It's, it's really, it's me, it's you, it's us, it's your neighbors, it's connection, it's community, it's unity. All those words that make for a better, better outcome of all people's lives, I guess. So if you'd like a sign, I am doing a little blitz this weekend with the signs that I've put together. And I'd be happy to deposit one hands-free onto your front lawn. Does anybody have any questions or?
Anybody?
Well, I just, um, this movement kind of began over a year ago with, just with the news about the suicide rate in our community and in our state and a desire to create a more positive, you know, backdrop for us to build our community connections. And COVID has just made all the issues we were addressing that much worse. And I just, I just wanted to put a shout out to Joan and the many people that are helping her because it looks like she's the one person show, but she's definitely part of a big team. And Joan's been such a, such a great community member with her, her house project and her flag project and all of the things she's done to create a community connectedness where people belong, no matter their shape, color, size, abilities. And that's just continuing that theme of we all belong and we are all connected. And I just appreciate her efforts and I look forward to paint my own sign when I find a few minutes that it's more than thirty-two degrees outside.
Yeah.
Super good job. Thank you for coming and sharing this with us, Joan.
You are welcome. And like I said, if any of you want one, I'd be happy to put it up around town. We do have a Facebook page now. We are working on a website. We are working on hiring somebody to help us with some of the administrative work. So we are, you know, looking downstream. This isn't a fly-by-night. This is something that we hope to entrench in the community and, help people, what do they say, downstream? You know, if, if you get to the point where somebody is contemplating suicide, what could we have done beforehand to make that person feel more a part of a community or feel better connected or feel like there was just a person that they could talk to about what, what they were feeling? And, um, yeah. You're right, Jimmy, that it's all the harder now.
That is exactly what this is about. It's about coming over, overcoming diversity and all the, this tough stuff that we deal with and sharing our experience with people, how we overcame certain issues in our lives.
Yeah.
And, and with, with COVID going on, I think this is the best approach right now to get people familiar with Connect St. Helens because a lot of people don't even know what is Connect St. Helens. What is it?
Yeah. And it is about sharing stories. I'm glad you said that. You know, I have always said in a long, you know, held belief of my own is if you know a little bit about somebody, you treat them with more compassion and respect. So if, we have this thing called five-minute life story. And we, we had a Zoom meeting the other day to talk about the, that Connect St. Helen signs. And we had a couple of people on there that I don't even know very well, but they did a five-minute life story. And I don't just know their name now. I know a little bit about their struggle and I know a little bit about what they've overcome and, and how they might feel connected to this community. And if we all knew just a little bit more about each other, I think it would really help in the respect for someone and just being compassionate towards those people.
Well, and then you don't, you no longer felt alone.
Right, yeah. Oh, you know, everybody has struggles. It's amazing when you do this five-minute story, these people that you look at and you think, man, they just got it all together. And then they tell you their story and it's like, wow. That isn't really exactly what I expected. And look what she or he has overcome. And we all have stories to tell. We all have pain and we all, and in the sharing, there's a lot to be gained. There's a lot to be gained.
Thank you, Joan.
You are welcome. And I hope I can put one on your lawn, Mayor Shoal. Let me know. I don't know where.
You can. I'm on a dead-end street. It's not a good location.
It doesn't matter.
I'm behind the city shops. You can have, you can get ahold of me. I'll, I'll put one up. I'll come grab one for me, okay?
All right, all right. Maybe I'll just drop off some and then you can put them up themselves. And all of this, this one that I have right now, it just says, we all belong and it's got the symbol. It's going on to Sherry Ford's lawn today because she's also a member of this group. So I just wanted to share information-wise for you guys. So if you see them pop up, you'll, you will, you will be in the know because you guys should be in the know. So.
And this actually was modeled after Discover Battle Ground. And we actually got a grant and had those people come over. The, the director of that come over and give us a, a bunch of training on it.
This is still working with us.
Yep, yep.
This logo, but he's working with us. And, and if I can just say one more thing real quick. Out of this, out of this group, um, you guys were instrumental in getting, this is us, St. Helens, the, the little houses put downtown. And then they were in the, uh, at the chamber for almost two years. And now they've taken each one individually and they're at the schools in the district. So there's one in each of the schools in the district.
Oh, nice.
Well, they, they live on. So, and, and I, you know, they can say, tell their story other places. So. And that happened through a conversation that I had with somebody through this Connect St. Helens. I had a conversation with a couple of people and, and Alex Tardif was in that group and he said, you know, you should put them in the schools. Then I, I contacted Scott Stockwell, who I know because he's in part of this group. And I said, hey, Scott, what would you think? And he called his guy and picked him up and dropped him off. It was great. So they, they continue to be part of the community. And I thank you for, you know, letting them get there to begin with. So now you know, if you see a, an old political sign with a big green daisy or whatever you want to call it on there, that it's Connect St. Helens trying to, trying to get entrenched in our community.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. You guys have a great day.
You too. Okay, uh, do we have any other visitor comments? I have a blank screen. Must be Joan going off. Okay. No other visitor comments. We're going to move on to our first item on our agenda, which is Employee Lake of Service Award, which is to Corporal King, Dustin King, uh, St. Helens PD, um, five years of service. I don't know if he's available, Matt.
I don't see Mr. King on the list.
No, he wasn't able to make it.
Okay. But I just want to state that he was hired back in, I think, oh seven and then rehired back in fifteen. And he has, uh, worked his way up through detective now to corporal. And, uh, he continues to excel and serve our community. And, uh, he's a great asset, ass, asset to our police department. So thank you, Corporal King. I like saying that. The other counselors would like to say anything? Other than congratulations? I have a black screen again, Matt. I don't know why somebody keeps popping up black.
Uh, everything looks good from my end.
Okay. This looks odd looking at a black screen with a white silhouette in the middle. Okay. Let's go on to our next item, which is discussion regarding broadband. Matt, Strategic Network and the Strategic Network Group.
Yeah, give me one second to get them on. And then Michael, you should have co-hosting abilities to share your screen for the presentation.
Okay.
And.
Can you see my screen all right?
Yep.
Ken, yes.
All right. Hi, everyone. These guys on so I can actually see the small buttons.
All right. So council, I'll introduce Michael Curry real quick. He's from Strategic Networks Group. As you know, one of our strategic, uh, action plans is looking at more capabilities of broadband in our community. And John and I did a number of interviews with a number of cities that already have fiber networks set up. Some that are managed by different companies, some that are managed by the city itself. Through the, all of those meetings, we got connected with Michael Curry and his company. And we've had some initial discussions and we thought it was appropriate to bring it now to council because they are looking for next steps to getting started. And so I'm going to hand it off to Michael to go through his presentation. And, uh, his staff is here and happy to answer any questions and looking forward to working with the city of St. Helens. So, Michael, I will hand it off to you.
Great. Well, thanks very much, Matt, and, and nice to meet everyone. I'm, I've got a few slides to go through, but if anyone has any questions, you know, feel free to sort of type up and ask for clarification. And then, you know, for discussion, we'll, we'll save those, uh, you know, more substantive questions for the end. So I'll just jump in, um, you know, I'll, I'll get him some background first, but I think, you know, what we're bringing to the table is that the capital expertise to finance, build, operate, maintain what is a wholesale digital infrastructure, like utility for St. Helens. And, you know, you know, Matt had mentioned, you know, Columbia City and Scopus could also be involved, but I think the main driver right now is St. Helens. This is more than just fast internet, fast broadband, you know, like roads and having, you know, a good electrical grid. It's a platform. And especially now for that community's resilience and innovation. So our unique approach is that we combine not just the digital infrastructure, getting that in, but also the, what we call digital transformation, getting people to help them understand what they can do with it. The analogy that I use is, you know, we have, you know, communities and regions investing in schools, you know, think about, you know, the tens of millions of dollars invested to get a new high school, for example. Great, great new facility, state-of-the-art, but how useful is that school when you don't have any teachers? But that's what we're doing with these broadband networks, you know, how with these, you know, online practices and social media and all these things and, and digital platforms. Businesses that have been around for twenty, thirty, forty years, you know, locally and which are cornerstone to the, to the local economy, you know, do they know what they, you know, can and should be doing? Not only be competitive, but just to be relevant. And so that's, that's part of it to make that case because any area that is unserved, underserved or overcharged broadband is essentially not enough of a business case for the private sector providers to come in. So in that case, we need to look at this differently. We need to pivot from what is a business case for broadband to an economic case, just like we deal with roads and, and other utilities. So in terms of who we are, I'm, I'm the president of Strategic Networks Group. I've been working on this for twenty-five years on broadband. I started Connected Economy Solutions to be that, you know, that's our focal point to bring all these partners together so that we can bring, you know, turnkey solution to the communities to get the, you know, first of all, the economic case developed, um, you know, bring the investors in, get the design engineering, aggregate demand, go through all those things, get the construction guys in, and then the operations, you know, so that you have a network that then can be bought by the community. But up until then, you know, we've got the expertise to, to get that in place for you and be inclusive. You know, this is not something where we want to have, you know, the, the lowest hanging fruit, those, those most profitable neighborhoods connected. We want this to be every ubiquitous, meaning everyone connected. And I think, um, the woman who was speaking before, you know, that was, you know, very well in line with what we're trying to do. So in terms of what it is, as I just said, it's just, it's not just connecting the most profitable neighborhoods. It's, it's a community-wide fiber-based. You know, getting fiber, which is future-proof. We're not, we're agnostic to technology or vendor-neutral. I'm an economist by training and we look at how people are connected, what they're doing with it and how they benefit. And from the data and research, we've done over ten states. We've got over eighty-five thousand records from how individual businesses, organizations and households use broadband and internet and those online practices. You know, we've developed an interesting platform of this and we see what those impacts are. We want to design this for open access, basically, so it's separating the ownership and wholesale operation, just like roads. You know, UPS and FedEx don't own their own roads. No, it's the community, it's the region that builds and maintains the roads. So FedEx, UPS and anyone else can use it. And that's what works. That's why we have public investment. You can then have one prefer ISP or multiples, uh, ISPs on it. You know, they can, and typically we're just doing a broadband roadmap for another client right now. And for those areas that they say we can invest, you know, it's just not a business case for us to invest. So they don't, you know, when we've, when I've asked them, okay, so if we could build out that digital infrastructure that you could then use, would you be interested in, in looking at that? Yes, absolutely. So because it increases their market reach. You know, this is important because it's, 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 it's a platform that can be resilient, especially with COVID, what's going on and, and future innovation. You know, it's, it's about keeping with job retention, keeping businesses, keeping youth in the area. So they can, you know, live there and work there. It's, it's retaining that tax base and growing that tax base and, and improving that quality of life. It's also, I mean, keys to that is having that, you know, local education network, you know, managing those, you know, municipal facilities and getting it to smart community services. Why is it so important now? Well, we're seeing how this is not just economic, it's existential. The investment cannot be put off. The challenges are the private sector, you know, isn't, and, and five G is not a substitute for, for digital infrastructure. It's a compliment and still, you know, it's a far way off. You know, the, the private providers are really, you know, actually were pulling back from, you know, our work with the state of Oregon earlier this year, you know, we're hearing about, you know, they're, they're pulling back their investments in the network. So that's the wrong direction. You know, we need to, you know, respond to this escalating transition of work and healthcare and education online and everyone needs access. It's not just a luxury. And this is a new norm that we need to, you know, not just to deal with this right now, but that's, you know, going forward. That's what we're seeing and getting feedback on.
So, Michael, did I hear you correctly? You said the larger investors are pulling back?
The incumbents, yeah. I mean, they're, they're focusing on the metro areas, the big, uh, areas, especially rural areas. They're pulling back. Chris Tamron, who is the lead for Broadband Oregon, you know, he has, uh, shared with me some of those stories. So I'm actually, you know, presenting tomorrow to the, uh, Oregon Broadband Advisory Committee. I'm not sure where things stand with St. Helens and the major, uh, providers, but, um, yeah, they're, they're trying to, you know, consolidate their businesses. And, you know, it's, I think private investment is interested. I know it is actually because we're dealing with a number of investors. But we have to pivot, as I said, from that just pure business case where it's, you know, the revenues have to exceed CapEx and OpEx to looking at this as, you know, this is infrastructure, just like roads where the community, you know, benefits also factor in, you know, job staying, quality of life improving and so forth.
It can be very difficult to, to, Comcast in our area has a monopoly on cable.
Yeah.
They just do.
Yep.
So, um, who else are you going to go with? Who's going to come in and try to compete?
Well, we are. We're going to, I mean, when you bring in fiber, you know, first of all, cable, sure, they've got thirty, forty, maybe even higher percentage of the market. Uh, and they want to stay with their, they want to, you know, basically keep that walled garden, uh, so they can maximize profits. When you come, but what happens when the kids get home from school? If, if they're still going to school during the, if they're all online during the day, it makes it even harder. But, you know, typically in pre-COVID, as soon as, you know, four o'clock hits, the cable connectivity, the, the throughput has gone down because everyone's online. With fiber, that doesn't happen.
Great.
So when we come in, I just had this discussion yesterday with an investor who was actually financed Comcast and all those guys, from a Wall Street guy. And, um, essentially what's going to happen is, you know, his concern was, well, there's forty percent, you know, of the market is owned by one of the cable operators in one, another community where we're working. Well, essentially, when you bring in that fiber, there's such a high dissatisfaction with the internet service, they're going to switch. And then soon enough, if they want to preserve their brand, they're going to say, okay, can we ride on your fiber network? Because we're not going to invest in fiber, but we want to provide our service over fiber. And sure, you know, they can do their, 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 their video and television services over that, over their existing cable. But, you know, people want that fiber. So.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yep.
Okay. So really, it's, it's really one of two futures that we're looking at. One is, you know, what's been happening, which is incumbent development approaches where the assets are then being captured by outside interests and all the money is going outside the community. Along with that independence and wealth. The other approach is, you know, hey, we own our own infrastructure. Those local assets controlled by the community for their benefit, retaining that wealth locally and being able to create new wealth in innovative ways. You know, this is, this is existential. The Amazons, I mean, it's all about extracting as much as they can from those providers. When in fact, you know, they need in the longer term, these communities to be creating their own wealth. So what do we bring to the table? What's the offer? You know, first, you know, an overview of this, which is, you know, we're going to come into an agreement with the community to, to build and operate a fiber-based digital network for that, you know, defined area. You know, I would like to start, you know, with a core, you know, substantial group. We can grow out later, but the key thing is, we have that community commitment and engagement. You know, we're going to get, you know, secure the financing for the project. Whether it's debt or equity, you know, there's a number of options depending on, you know, the needs and how we want to structure. But really, it's, it's to get this thing going quickly to the design, construction, operational and maintenance. The community has the option to, to own it, violence, project is stabilized and profitable. You know, that's the goal. What we are looking for from the community as a partner, you know, one, primarily, it's, it's the key thing for that community engagement. We're doing this, you know, this is for your, your better connectivity in, in the future economic vitality of St. Helens and the other communities that want to participate. You know, what we need is, you know, that, you know, you're of the community that, you know, you're behind this, you know, when we put out, you know, a, a survey, you know, the e-business checkup or the e-household checkup that, you know, as many as possible, then everyone participates because they understand why this is so important. You know, to how, see how they're connected and whether they're willing to sign up. We also want to make sure that, you know, facilitate the permitting and right-of-way and other hurdles, easements and so forth to get through that as quickly as possible and leveraging those local assets that are existing. Maybe have some dark fiber and holes and things you can bring to the table. All that helps. Also in-kind services and outreach. I mean, what we want to do is, you know, hire local people for that build, for the maintenance, for the truck rules that need to happen for the training. This becomes a community project that is, you know, you know, we manage with, with you. Bringing in that private capital. And so. Doing this for twenty-five years. You see some of these projects going tall. Side, side world and so forth. You know, we were taking the best practices that we've seen and bringing this together with, you know, some of the best in the business through that whole value chain across North America. And again, we want the community to have this as a revenue generating asset down the road. How does the ownership work? Well, we would set up a special purpose vehicle, you know, whether it be a, uh, authority, district, corporation, what have you, depending on order along, you know, but the key thing is with board members representing, representing both the investment obligation and the community interests. As I mentioned, the local participation contributions, you know, you know, when you want to, you know, well, lay all that out. We've done this before. Here's a process. We go through. Matt has, has seen some of that. But, you know, who participates and how, and how are they contributing to this? Because essentially, you're getting a network for free through the private investment. We're needing though, key things is that community engagement and participation and, and so forth. And again, the option is for the community ownership in the future. One of the key criteria we have is that the network not to be sold to private providers. This remains a local asset for future, you know, self-determination and local wealth. We will want this to be a community-based asset. And so here's some preliminary numbers that we ran up from the analysis. Essentially, it's looking to be a ten million dollar network to connect every premise in, in St. Helens with fiber. The key thing, you know, what, you know, this looks, it's casual positive from the beginning. The key thing is you see here the economic impacts, you know, we're seeing fifty new jobs created, you know, two-point-seven million in annual business net revenues increased because of that broadband. Income taxes increase and an annual GDP impressive, almost three and a half million. If we were to scale this across the, the tri-cities of, um, St. Helens, Columbia City and Scopus, you know, we're talking another five months or fifty million dollar, fifteen and a half million dollar project. Again, with some more, some more significant economic impacts, you know, new jobs. But also there's a whole bunch of quality of life benefits that we haven't touched on here, um, that we could sort of lay out. So there's a lot here. Uh, we can go through that, but I just wanted to keep this as an overview. What we're, what we've got is a, is a path for that we, you know, pretty rigorous in, in putting through. But, you know, um, starting off with a pro forma and readiness assessment, getting into engineering, getting into an offer, getting the financing and then getting into the actual assessment and then, you know, getting to the bill. So really for us, you know, what we're looking for is that agreement to proceed with the digital needs and readiness assessment, which is really a ten-minute online survey on, you know, from each of the community leaders. On what are the goals you have? What are the issues you're trying to deal with? And there's some broadband readiness questions for, for broadband initiative that we'd like you to, you know, you tell us, you know, sort of options of, you know, where are you at, you know, for multiple, it's multiple choice, like four questions on progress. Like I said, it takes ten minutes. We would then get that together, look at this and say, you know, you know, how much alignment are you? What are the goals? Where does it, you know, fit with, with, you know, with this initiative? Where does it, you know, fit with with, you know, with this initiative? And and present that with you. You get a copy of that. And then when, if that's ready, looks like an interest for the investors, you know, set up a meeting with those investors. To discuss the options in terms that are potentially available. And that's, that's the, I mean, that's the end of the presentation, but I just wanted to. Walk through that quickly and open it up to any questions right now or discuss.
Any counselors?
Well. You look at me wanting to get a good idea what cable, computers. And fiber is like, you probably shouldn't. I would really like to wait till our new council gets, this is going to be a long term thing and is no use the end of the tail. Setting up a fairly big project. But I think we need some other eyes who have got a lot of computer and communication experience to. Throw some information into the, into the ring.
What would they tell you different if I could ask counselor Topaz? What would they tell you different than now versus in the future?
If I knew that, I'd tell you, but I know there's a number of places, five G and some of the other. Networks have gotten into trouble because they're going in too fast. And that's, you know, that may be management and maybe equipment, I don't know. But I know it isn't just a straight down the road shot, so that's why. Other opinions.
You're you're right about that. So let me, let me unpack that. Five G is the new technology, it's wireless, they're trying to replace. Instead of putting wireline, you know, going wireless to five G, it's still very nascent, you know, less than five percent, even two percent is out there. It's not a substitute for fiber. In terms of communities that have gone down the road of tribal networks, yeah, many have done this, many have failed. Mainly because they, you know, went out and built it and hoped businesses or in households would get signed up, you know, they will come. Nice movie, you know, feel the dreams, but in reality, and what is what we're doing is. We're getting the demand upfront, where instead of, like I said, you know, expecting people to sign up after it's built and after all that money and all that. Capital has been invested, we want actually people to sign up beforehand. That's part of the key differences. We looked at the numbers in the pro forma, you know, looks like there's enough critical mass to make this work. Part of the community engagement that we ask of the community is when we put out the e-business checkup and the household checkup. Sorry, someone else is.
Yeah, somebody was coming in, I don't know. I think somebody was talking in the background.
You know, I have a comment and counselor Locke can help me out with this, but it seems like about five, six, seven years ago. We started beating the drum regarding this this very same issue. And it's, you know. Every time counselor Locke and I get together, we talk about it. We talk about doing our, you know, our own system. I know Sandy, the city of Sandy has done that, but this is very intriguing to me and so. Whether we, we, it isn't a matter of going forward and doing this, it's a matter of time. And when, when, when is the right time to do this? So I'd I'd like to see, I'd like to see some timelines in terms of. Setups and setup costs, those kinds of things. And I I appreciate the preliminary. Introduction today. Thank you, Mr. Curry. Keith, do you have anything?
Keith, your microphone is not working again. You got a different computer? I still can't hear you. He'll, he'll probably log off and restart his computer.
He'll bring someone in to sign for him.
So I I do want to clarify the ask today of counsel. Is for Michael Curry to receive your email addresses for the city council for St. Helens. And potentially Scappus and Columbia City, for him to send you that needs ready assessment. And for you to get back to him. In essence, the faster you guys reply to that and show interest. The more interest his company and the investors have in coming into the community and building a network such as this. And so the city of St. Helens, if you choose to move forward with this, would have an option to purchase the utility and own the utility outright. If it chose to down the road. If ten years down the road, the city council at the time decides it's not a good investment and they don't want to do it, they don't want to buy it. Then it stays with Michael Curry and and the company that is created to manage this. Which, as he said, is a special district similar to the PUD where you have people from different jurisdictions. So maybe it's one or two counselors from the city of St. Helens or one from Scappus, one from Columbia City, one from the PUD. And then their investors, however that may work out, which we're still working on how that formulates. But we have to figure out if there's an interest to move forward from the city council at this time.
Oh, it could potentially be a we, not us. Type situation as far as other cities and maybe even county.
Correct. Michael, Michael Curry and I have discussed numerous options about including initially just St. Helens. And what we have seen is some hesitation on Scappus and Columbia City to. Saying, hang on a second, I'm letting Keith back in, to kind of come to the table. And so the hope is that. Michael and his company have talked to their investors and they're ready to move forward with just St. Helens. They see the potential, they see the possibilities. And they would like to move forward with St. Helens. If Columbia City and Scappus come to. Come to agreements and they want to join in. I know I've had conversations and the city administrator for Columbia City is on board here as well. And I've had conversations with him and he's talked to his council and has been on board. I think Scappus has been a little bit behind just because they have a new city manager and she's getting more familiar with things and. And so there's a possibility of expansion as this continues to start and grow. But it could potentially grow out to the county, it could potentially grow to Culpack's kind of boundary of Northwest Oregon. So, but the starting point right now is Michael and his company is looking at St. Helens.
If I could just add in there, yeah, I mean. You know, there, the option to grow is also of interest, but the first step is we want something solid. I mean, this process that we're going through. Starting with the leadership, we have to have, you know, a committed, engaged leadership as the first criteria. If we don't have that, we don't go in. There's a bunch of other due diligence steps and I think to Counselor Topaz's point, I want to get real upfront and 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 we want to get that committed demand upfront. Because we do not want to be in those situations like other communities. We've seen them. I know those networks, I know what happened. We get all that capital upfront and then we don't have the cash flow. You know, this is something that's supposed to be a community asset in the future, but we want to set it up so we can get it, you know, private investment so we can get it up quickly. And efficiently, you know, there's government grants that are available. You know, they were always, they're looking for a match. Communities don't have that match. Second, you know, once you start going down that path of asking for that funding, making those applications, it takes a lot of effort and time. And then it's a probability, small probability that you'll actually get it. You can't wait any longer. I mean, look at the kids who don't have access, you know, to do homework, you know, the businesses that are failing. Because they can't, you know, have reliable access and can't get online. So, you know, and then just the socialists, I think. A woman who spoke earlier talked about, you know, just connecting with people. So, you know, this is now. So, you know, that's fine. If the community doesn't want to do it and not interested, that's fine. There's others that we're working with that want to, but we want to. You know, for those who weren't, we want to work with them because we are, this is part of our DNA at this point, why we're doing this. So getting that committed demand upfront, understanding not just, you know, current demand, but what the potential demand is. And then working with you to help, help people understand what they can do with this, not just for a home business or a small business, but also. Aging in place, doing your homework, you know, starting a, you know, starting some side business or other other things that you can do to supplement your income. All those things factor in, but we want to first start with something solid, you know, we don't want to be hurting cats. Been there, got the scars to show for it, scratch marks more like, but we want something solid. And then potentially when that makes sense to grow from there.
I just had a comment. Just having lived out here in a few different places and having talked to other parents. St. Helens city limits is pretty well blanketed with connection. But there are huge, huge pockets of more rural, kind of outside the urban growth boundary, but still within our school district. Still very much within our county that has little or no service, spotty service at best, can't stream a video. And people are striving to educate children. So I think that, oh, well, well meaning St. Helens to kind of take the lead on this is great. But to not extend this to Deer Island, to Yankton, to rural areas of our community that are not served. Would be just foolhardy because it's like. You know, the thing that we hear about everything is like St. Helens gets everything, what about us on the fringe? So it's like, we have to have a bigger conversation if we're really talking about connecting our community and making everyone equal. So people that, if you live five miles up Deer Island Road or whether you live right next to City Hall. You can, your kid can do online school without driving to the parking lot at the school district. So, I mean, I think it's a bigger conversation than this group of folks. It's just, it's a bigger conversation before we make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. I know that a few months ago. Before COVID lockdown, we had a regional meeting with all the counselors. From the neighboring cities and the county leadership and that that might be a good. Email list to contact to where you kind of cast a bigger net. Because I know there's state interest for increasing accessibility for rural communities and that is to include going the other way. To Rainier and to Clascanite because there's huge parts of those communities that have little or no connection. That's just my opinion.
Counselor Carlson, we did, myself and Michael Curry and Scott France and his team, we did present the same presentation and idea to Culpack. As well as CZET. So Paul Vogel and his team are aware of us and what we are trying to do. We also have reached out through the broadband. And Rachel Berry with the South County Columbia Group, they are aware of what we're doing and we're trying to tie all those things together. So we are in that, in that process of doing that and people are familiar with what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I just, I would, I, you know, I'm supportive of a we, the community, not a I. The community. The other piece is I want to make sure that we've addressed the backside. We did an upgrade a few years ago to try to decrease out. Expense for streetlights and found out that it bit us on the other side and we want to make sure we've. Exposed any vulnerabilities financially that may be not included in his spreadsheet. Does that make sense, Matt?
Yep. Yeah, we actually, I have initially reached out and hopefully am going to have a meeting with PUD and Michael Sykes. The new director of PUD and I know Rachel Berry's has been in contact with PUD because the discussion about poll loses and all that kind of. Talk for polls. It seems a little bit more open at the PUD now that Michael Sykes is there versus when it was before.
I just don't want a million dollar surprise.
Correct, correct.
Not, not going the wrong direction. I'll take the, I'll take the positive surprise, but I don't want to have it going the other way.
Yeah, Michael, in essence, we, we did a project where we installed LED lights. And then the PUD decided to increase the rate seventy two percent and kind of take out a lot of the savings that we were anticipating. To pay back the debt service. So it was, was not a fun time. And there's art even on both sides, so.
I just want to make sure now that we, you know, lesson learned. You know, lead us down that path once, but we're not going a second time and whether to Counselor Topaz's point, this is a long term project. And I won't be in this little window, God willing, when this project comes to fruition and I just don't want to leave. A bad legacy for the community because whether you're city councilor for five years or fifty years, it's still about good stewardship.
Mayor Shoal, I have the city administrator from Columbia City on the line and he would like to ask a question if that is okay with you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Again, this is Mike McLaughlin over Columbia City. Can everybody hear me okay?
Okay, Mike.
Okay, great, thanks. And first of all, I'd like to thank, you know, Matt for really being a driving force behind this. He's, you know, done a fantastic job reaching out. And wanted to be a real good neighbor, real inclusive with this project and also appreciate Michael's contributions. And thanks, of course, to Mayor Shoal and the rest of council for allowing us to to jump in and to share. And while I'm not speaking for, you know, the council per se, I can speak as to, as to general interest. Not only within council members, but also within the community to be a part of this, you know, moving forward. So I can speak with some positivity toward the overall concept. And 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 the recognized need within the community for it. Because as Counselor Carson said earlier, there is a huge drop off. And more than likely, especially in our northwestern areas of our community, are probably going to start to see that on the Deer Island side of our community. So we believe it'd be a real positive impact. But during Michael's talk. We, I heard the term or the phrase, start with the core and grow out later. Right now, are we, are we solely considering St. Helens being that core? With us potentially Columbia City and Scappus being as part of the grow out later? Or could we also be a part of this core?
That depends. Our goal and to speak to Counselor Carlson's comments. You know, we want to get as many people connected with the broadband they need as possible. On the flip side of that, though, is there's got to be that fiduciary responsibility to the investors. You know, we've structured this in a way that with the, you know, looking at this, not just the traditional ISP business case. Which, I'll repeat again, any area that's unserved, underserved or overcharged. Is because there's not enough of a business case. Right. You know, they want the returns three to five years. If we're looking ten, twenty, thirty years returns, that changes things. If we're also engaged with those, you know, that digital transformation, raising awareness, working with those community, you know, businesses and households. On what they can do with this, that increases. You know, not just the local economy, but also the revenue base and subscriber basis of the network combined, you know, that makes then. Something that wasn't before possible, but, you know, with the business case now it's possible with the economic case. So, you know, if. We get to the point where the leadership, yeah, we're, we're, we're interested, these are the goals we have, these are the issues and this is where we are in terms of readiness. You know, we can take that, you know, when we do the broadband economic impact and market demand assessment that we do. I said, you know, that's the e-business checkup and the household checkup. We can put it to the whole county if you want. You know, if we see enough of a demand and there is a case to invest, you know, we can grow this. The concern is, you know, one. When you start going beyond one political jurisdiction, you know, you have more complications, you know? And I made that comment about herding cats. That costs time and money. And, you know. There's a great, you know, commercial from years ago about herding cats, but the financial guys, you know, that that makes it more risky. But if you can work together, if people can be on board, hey, we're moving together quickly, efficiently, absolutely, we want to make this as, as, as big as possible. We want to have a strong core to work from and then build out and, you know, again, also Carlson's comments. Where we start off, you know, is going to depend, you know, those other areas that you mentioned, why not include them? But they have to step up to the plate. They have to, you know, pre-commit, get that committed demand upfront. Here's what you would get, you know? You know, I'm not going to quote any numbers, but it, you know, that I'm going to be held to, but if it's, you know, sixty bucks for a hundred meg and a hundred bucks for a gig. Of speed, it's reliable, it's full, not just advertised speeds, you know, would you sign up for this? And if we have, you know, only thirty percent sign up and that doesn't meet the threshold, that's one thing versus, you know, forty or fifty percent. And I'm going to show something quickly to speak to, if I can just share my screen again, Matt.
You should have a building too.
We, we, this is my presentation tomorrow to the Oregon Broadband Advisory Council. We did a statewide assessment for the state of Oregon. We did a statewide assessment for the state of Oregon. We've had, I forget how many responses overall. But you have, you know, 89% of households and 94% of businesses dissatisfied with their internet service. Sure, this covers a lot of rural areas, but the majority are urban. So people are ready to switch. And in terms of actual connectivity for households, it's, you know, cable is pretty high. DSL there, fiber is pretty low. There's a huge investment that's needed. And pre-COVID, you know, this is the amount of teleworking people were doing. You know, one day a week, you know, some, you know, four and five days a week, you know, 15 and 18%, you know, full time. So, you know, there's, and again, you know, it serves as satisfaction, you know? People were very dissatisfied, you know, majority were dissatisfied with, you know, fixed wireless and DSL. Great that they can get it, but given the current circumstances where, you know, we have to stay at home. We can't go to work, we have to telework, our kids can't work, I mean, what about the health? This is existential. So, you know, we want to get this in as quickly as possible to those who need it and those, you know, if you're willing to work with us, step up to the plate to say, say, with that community engagement. We'll cast that net as wide as, as we can.
Well, what I could tell you, Michael, is that we, South Columbia County, which would be Columbia City, starting at Deer Island kind of towards Scappus is definitely, we're very collaborative, work well together. And, you know, I just wondered, what would you guys require from us as a city? What, what would you, like, we have franchise fees. Is that, you know, is that something that we're still going to get? Is that something that you would ask us to waive?
The main thing that we're looking for, yeah, I mean, we can talk about those, those details. The main thing is that we have community engagement. Then when we say, you know, look, here's the digital reason reasons, you know, the leaders who are interested in participating, that we have that. If it takes, you know, four weeks for us to get back, that tells us something versus, you know, in just a couple of days. When we have that community readiness, sorry, the, the market demand assessment. You know, all the businesses, households, organizations, take this. So we can understand, you know, how you're connected, using and benefiting from that, your connection. But also, are you willing to sign up your, you know, have a pre-commitment? You know, we're interested in this type of service, and yes, we would sign up for this when it made it was available. That that's promoted by the community, that for us is worth much more than the franchise fees or anything like that. Those are in-kind, you know, engagement marketing that you, you, money can't buy. You know, that's coming from you to promote this and engage the people. And really, we're doing this because we're going to make, you know, 15 new jobs are going to be created in St. Helens, 83 in the, in the, you know, three communities. All these benefit, this is why we're doing this. We can work with you to do that. I hope that sort of covers some of those pieces.
Yeah, I did. And the reason I said South Columbia, Columbia County is because that's what the population is. You're going to see that. It's unfortunate for the rest of the county, but it's kind of like what you guys are kind of on the smaller scale, looking at what Comcast does too, but you're reaching out to even beyond what they're dropping and not serving us very well. A lot of people do state that.
Yeah.
And then their other option is CenturyLink, and then they lose you will switch over to it for, you know, a little while, and then CenturyLink's actually been working really hard in our area, trying to get some stuff going. I've noticed that. Not promoting them, but that's just obvious. You see them around. But most of the time they'll drop CenturyLink, you go back Comcast. Those are our two options right now.
Yeah, yeah. And hence, we see those dissatisfaction numbers so high.
Yes, yeah.
Internet service. So, you know, we want to change that. I mean, I've, I mean, I've, I'm, like I said, I've come this from the demand side of broadband. You know, I'm not an engineer with those vendors, which is all supply side. I just, who's, what is that internet that they need and how does it impact their business or their lives? That's what we're interested in, helping improve that. So, you know, if, if you can get those other areas working with you collaboratively, hey, we'll cast that net out. I mean, for us to do that assessment, you know, just for St. Helens or the whole county, for us, it's, it's not much difference. You know, but it does matter in, in terms of who participates because that takes much more coordination, engagement to get all the businesses and households in the county involved. But if you can pull that together and, you know, hey, our threshold to build this is we have to have 40% of people pre-committing to get this up. You know, we'll be clear and upfront about that. Hey, we're at 36%. It doesn't work. Or, you know, like in M. in Idaho, where I saw this model work, you know, they hit 75% pre-committed demand. You know, their threshold in that case was 70%, which is pretty high, but now those are the financials, they could then, hey, we can build now. And that's part of the communication with the community that we would get into.
So, Mike, I want to turn it back over to Mike in case he had any more questions. I'm sorry to interrupt. Mike, are you still there?
Yeah, I just need to unmute him.
Okay, I was wondering if he had any more questions for Michael? You there, Mike?
I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Did you have any more questions? Did you have any more questions?
I did have one more. But it's only one, I promise, Mayor. The, I understand your, what your initial asks are, you know, mainly support, commitment, contribution in a timely manner. Going forward, what if any financial commitment upon the communities are, are expected, if there are any at all? And then that's my final, I'll mute up.
Good question. So in terms of, you know, there are some out of pocket costs that we want the community to have some skin in the game. But it's, you know, less than 15% of the actual cost for the, you know, upfront due diligence. Because really what we're doing is the due diligence upfront prior to build. So there's some of those elements. Scott, I'm sorry. Scott Francis online with me, you know, you know, has worked with me on that. But, you know, Matt, you've got that digital infrastructure offer, which lays out, you know, here are the steps that we go through. And here are, you know, here's what the cost is, and here's what the financials. So, like I said, it's, it's less than 15% of those, some of the due diligence steps. And for us, it's really just, we want that community's commitment and be part of this. Once it gets to build, you know, one community that we're working with, they've actually offered up to put in 35%. But we also understand that communities just don't have that, you know, financing. That's why we built this model. With COVID especially, it becomes even harder. That's why the investors are prepared to come in with the full either financing. It's primarily going to be financing, equity is going to be tough, but coming in with that financing for the full network. And in the case of St. Helens in lower Columbia County, or all of Columbia County depending, but, you know, we want to, you know, we, we understand the, the critical need of this. So we want to get this going as quickly as possible. So, you know, once we go through the due diligence, it could take, you know, two to four months, maybe longer. You know, the construction, engineering and then design and then construction, you know, we would love to have something seen built out in 18 to 24 months. We don't want this to drag out because, you know, look at those kids that don't have access. Look at those businesses that are just struggling or people working, you know, you know, I, I don't have my job anymore. What am I going to do? You know, they need it now, they needed it six months ago. So we understand that critical needs and that's, you know, we're trying to work with communities who are ready to, to move forward. Hey, there's a lot, a lot of things that need to get done. But if those are ready, you know, the financial partners that we've got, and I'm dealing with three different financial groups who are focused on, you know, fiber and digital infrastructure, which is great. We can then bring those to bear and say, here, here's some, you know, candidate communities that are serious. They've shown and they've got a case for investing here, you know, what can we arrange for them?
So here's my, here's my other question. So the fact finding, whatever you call that, that survey, community readiness survey. What kind of financial commitment there is there to just gather that information? Is there a financial ask there?
Yeah, I mean, the cost of that is 8,500 bucks to do that. I mean, we're asking for the local contribution if it's just St. Helens. Our price point on that was, you know, 3,500. If it's all three communities to have some breakouts, I told Matt you could do it for 4K.
Yeah, it was about 4,500 or 5,000 between, if we were to do this readiness assessment for Scappus, Columbia City and St. Helens altogether, only about $4,000 or $5,000 for all of us.
And we're covering the rest. And we're doing this. S and G is actually investing our own time into this. In the end, once the project gets built, you know, we'll be, you know, compensated for some of that. But we're putting in our time and skin in the game ourselves.
Matt, since you did the calling, do you think there's some consent in the other communities to do the fact finding at least?
I definitely got that sense from Columbia City. And I know the city administrator, Michael, who's on the call earlier, definitely, as you have heard, is interested. And I know he has spoken with his counselors. I have not had any kind of conversation really with Scappus and their new city manager or their counselors. I have tried to reach out a couple of times and I would probably enlist Rachel to help with that. She seems to have a better communication between Scappus and St. Helens, so.
Did you have any conversation with the county?
The county has only been part of the conversations that I have had with the Columbia County Roundup Group and City Manager. So Holly, the IT manager there, as well as the Public Works Director, that's involved in those meetings. I had invited Holly to this, to this meeting, as well as all the other city councilors. And the idea was when we spoke with CSAT and Coal PAC, that we could eventually kind of bring everybody around. I think what's important to remember, and I don't want to speak specifically for the county or their plans, but their idea of doing fiber is the county wants to build a fiber ring around Columbia County. And then essentially they want to lease it out to a company to use. And that's great. And that's their, that's their idea and their plan, and they have no money. But their idea is that they're going to find grants and, and do it. I'm more of a realistic person. I don't see that as a good model. And I don't see that moving forward, especially in Columbia County for $20 million. And I think that was their estimated cost. So and I, I don't want to speak badly of that study and what was done to kind of create that plan. But what we're doing here with Michael Curry and S and G Group is basically creating some of that fiber ring for them. But the great thing that I see with working with S and G is that the city council and the communities have an option to own this utility as an asset for the future. And that's where I see a really big positive for 10 years, 15 years down the road. When you might take, a city council at the time may decide, yeah, we do want to buy it. Here's the agreed price. We're going to do a revenue bond, and we're just going to use the revenue that we get from it to pay off the debt, and then we own the utility. And that's very simplified of, of the idea. And I know Michael had his hand up, so I'm going to hand it off to him.
Yeah, I will also add that we're going to be connecting the individual premises. This is not just backbone or back hall or ring. The key thing is who is actually connected to it. And we've seen a lot of public-private partnerships where, you know, the vendors come in, the traditional ISPs come in. And there's different flavors, but essentially they say, hey, city, you know, build this, you know, middle mile. And then we'll connect the individual households and businesses. As an economist, the problem I see with that is those individual businesses and households are under monopoly. They have no choice, either buy my service or you don't. We want to build that, you know, basically, to use a road analogy, we're going to take that gravel road, pay, make a four-lane paved highway to everyone's front door that, you know, FedEx or UPS or the postal service or anyone else can access. Here's the wholesale rate. And so whether you have only one ISP or multiples, you know, that'll be designed, that'll be something to be figured out down the road. But it's, anyone can get onto that and provide that service, whether it's a local ISP or some of the big boys that you've mentioned already. And in terms of the revenue generating asset, I mean, this doesn't apply to, to St. Helens. But, you know, for the pro forma that we developed, basically a confidential information memorandum for the investors. A $20 million fiber investment over seven square miles, which is a higher density. In year 10, was generating from our pro forma, $4.5 million a year in EBITDA. So that's annual. So a community at that, for that, you know, for that community, they could buy that on our revenue bond.
And so. Say, how much did you say a year, Michael?
Four and a half million a year. And it's growing after year 10 for this, you know, that's certain assumptions that we can go through separately. But that's that revenue generating asset that we're talking about.
Oh, I heard you saying like a four-lane highway, basically, that you can give four different customers a lane to push product down.
Essentially, yeah. So what would happen is, I mean, that's a basis, it's an open access design, which wasn't feasible before. The technology is now that they can basically, you know, from their household, just connect. And they basically have a webpage that is a portal that essentially says, you know, here are the different service providers. Here's their offerings. What do you choose? And they click on it, put their credit card in, and they have that access, and they can switch at any time. Before truck rolls were needed to do that, it wasn't automated. I mean, before, I think, from what I've, I've seen other systems, I've heard is, you had 15 people manning that kind of operations. Now it can be done by 1.5 FTEs. Because of this has been automated, and that's what we're going to use. You know, our partner COS systems, that's what they do in the operation. So all of a sudden, the cost goes way down. You're opening the door to having competition for the, you know, for that household, for that business as a subscriber. And competition is always good. Prices go down, quality of service goes up. That's what we want to encourage. You know, we're not going to provide that service to the end user, you know? Or the service providers, local or the national ones, they can come in. What we want to make sure is that, you know, they have that, you know, reliable, you know, fiber or fiber hybrid connection. And we're also going to set aside, you know, those network slices for education, for health, for first responders, you know? And that's something we'll work through with you guys, depending on what your goals and issues are. We need to understand what those are so we can set those up.
Okay, I see Counselor Locke. I don't know if he got, if he wants to comment, but I think I seen him.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
All right. So, Michael, you were wrong as far as we needed this six months ago. We actually needed this five years ago is when we needed this. And so we're five years behind right now, counsel on this. So if we turn it down today, you're going to be 10 years before you even talk about it again. So we need to get acting on this thing. So, Michael, the only other question is, is what, what do you say the rates are going to be for this? Brass tacks here.
Well, that's going to, that depends is the answer that, you know, I have to say, as you understand. But we're trying to target, because it depends on how much of a market is there. What are the costs? Because we've done our cost, but we're going to have to, for the next step, get the engineers in. Hey, give us a detailed engineering cost, what this is going to be. And then plug that into our pro forma to say, okay, here's what it looks like. But the goals are, you know, to come in around, you know, for the end user, you know, 60 bucks a month for 100 meg, 80 bucks for 500 meg, and 100 bucks for a gig. Whether we can do that will depend on the actual costs, on how many people actually, you know, pre-commit and then we can expect to sign up. And how big of a, you know, market, if it's, if it's just St. Helens versus the whole area. Obviously, the, the bigger the critical mass of users, the more those fixed costs can be, you know, shared across those areas. Plus, you know, what are those anchor institutions, those big businesses, those, you know, municipal and first responder and, and big businesses, you know, what contracts they have, can we aggregate that demand? Because that also makes a huge difference. So all that factors in, and that's all part of that community engagement that we're looking for. Plus, you know, rights of way, existing fiber and so forth that can be tapped into. And what does that look like? All that can be, you know, cost offsets or cost reductions.
How does a guy know what he's getting right now as far as those numbers you were talking about? How does, how are those monitored? How are those scaled? The 500, the, the, make a byte. The five hundred, the, the, make a byte, the, the one you were talking, how, how do we know what we're getting currently?
Oh, we can do speed tests.
Yeah?
And we actually, if you look at the Oregon report, I can share that with Matt. Actually, I have it up right here. Let's put my glasses a bit closer here. There we go. I have to share a screen though first, don't I? So, speed tests. This is, this is the actual report that we provided, it's online. What are speeds actually getting? Here we go. Here's the, what they're spending and for businesses. So what we're talking about is substantially less than what the majority are spending, and the actual speeds. I have to find, here we go. So here's the download and upload speeds. Can you all see that?
Yep.
And we have that broken down by actual technology, whether it's DSL or fiber or cable and so forth. So.
And, hey, Michael, it might be good if you could briefly talk about what, what we had initially kind of talked about, I think, on Monday or a couple of days ago, when we were talking about the school initiatives for setting up a potential network for educational purpose only, and making that access, you know, the fiber network could potentially be a partnership with the school district to offer free educational network service. Can you explain that a little bit to some of the counselors?
Yeah, I mean, once you have the community digital infrastructure, I talked about network slices. You know, one, one slice would be for those retail service providers, you know? But there's also community needs and services. You know, one of them is education, and we're dealing with this with one of our other communities that we're working with. Actually, it's a county with four communities. A lot of kids just don't have access. They, their parents have to drive them to the parking lots of McDonald's to get free Wi-Fi. And that's really sad, you know, schools are trying to do a lot with providing, you know, tablets and computers. But if they got connected, you know, that's a real challenge, especially now. So if we, if we do this inside the community, we, they want to set up, you know, an educational network. And so we have to work out a relationship with the, with the school board, initial setup cost to get all that material online. You know, they've already got a lot of it. You know, we would then, because each premise, each household would be connected, you know, we could set up so that, you know, when you're tapping into that network, that's educational network, it's free for the kids. All kids. And then the other benefit is there would be other, no other access, so they don't need the parental controls or what are they getting into that's, you know, inappropriate content. No, this is just the schools' educational content, you can do video conferencing on that, in shared learning, whatever. You know, to us, you know, that was, you know, a real benefit, and, you know, the difference here is that, you know, because it's a community owners, you know, stewardship of the community, you know, when you deal with the private providers, hey, we want to do this educational network, or we want to do, you know, a first responder pilot, or we want to do these other kind of community, smart community service. Every time you, you take that to a Comcast or AT&amp;T or whoever your other providers are, you know, they're going to say, okay, you know, here's what it's going to cost, and then they say, oh, you know, we can't do that, we don't have the funds for that, you know? But in this case, well, we own the network, we can do what we want. We have the capacity because it's fiber, we can do what we want. We just need to, you know, be able to set it up the right way, and then make sure that the operational costs are covered.
Rick, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, I just think I'm ready to definitely take that survey, and I think five grand is a, for the overall scope of work is, for the next step is nothing to, the benefit could be very, very beneficial all to all aspects of our community and surrounding areas, so.
And I just want to mention too, that the ask is just to go to that next step, do that initial needs assessment. It's not saying, hey, we're going to build it, and we're going to start tomorrow, and you're committing to ten years to buying a network. That's not what we're saying right now. It's just getting to that next step is what we need your help with.
That's kind of where I stand. I don't know about the rest of the council, but that's definitely where I stand on that, so.
Put on the agenda to vote for tonight, Matt.
It is already on my list, as I assumed we would be doing that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Michael before we let him go? Hey, Michael, thank you for taking an hour, a little over an hour out of your time to present that to us.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor School.
Yep.
And thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to present.
All right. You have a good day.
Thank you.
You have a good day, okay?
Bye for now. Nice to meet everyone.
Yep, yep. Okay, so, we're going to discuss regarding urban trail map. And I think this, does this go back to our discussion, Council President Morton? Are we?
Yes, and, and some, quite some time ago, when Mr. Belcher and Carmen Dunn, I believe, came to the council and presented the concept, and then I believe Carmen and Lisa might have been, or Elise Mann might have been, might have given the, the other presentation, the most recent one, but that, that, that could have been Belcher as well. I'm not certain. It seems to me like they have given two presentations to the, to the council. So with that, we left that, in the last presentation, it asked more questions from the council, I believe, than it answered. So I took that back to the Parks Commission and, and Parks and Trails, pardon me, and actually said, hey, we need a little more work on this, I believe, so that the council can digest it more effectively. The way I read the room, if we had to vote on an action plan at that time, I don't think it would have passed. And so, and I, I think I, I let the Parks and Trails Commission know that. So there's, there, we're postured to have a kind of brainstorming kind of session. And it's going to be more than brainstorming, it's going to, to create a, something that's simpler and has more phases in it that is very simplified and is, and is more functional and workable to, to you folks. So what, what, with that, with that being said, we have not got to our, our, our virtual conference yet. We're waiting on that, and the whole idea is to take the urban trail, make it more of a hub, like, like I five in circles of city, and simplify it in that way, and then start to add the other little streets and those kinds of things, minor trails later on, once we get that on the, in the master plan and, and in, onto electronic medium and possibly onto a brochure. We also need the community to know about that, and a buy-in from the community as well. So that's where we're at right now, is kind of redefining that urban trail, where it is, all the little intersections, where those intersections will be, and, and basically safe passage all the way through. So that's, that's kind of what we're doing. So kind of think of it as a, for people who have gone to a, a snowboard or ski resort, think about it as a trail map. There's codes with those trail maps, the green, all the green runs are, are, are set up in green lines, and the same with the blues and the blacks. And so we have that distinction in, in recreational areas, and every intersection that you hit, those trails are marked. And that's kind of the, that's, that's the end goal, is to get people to a series of trails that link up and work together cohesively. And this urban trail will cross paths with six of our parks, counting the courtyard square. And, and so, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at. As soon as we get our, our virtual discussion going with our Parks Commission, they'll be postured to come in one more time and give you a dynamite presentation. I mean, the work that's been done thus far just needs to be kind of sorted out and worked in a very presentable way to you folks. So you, we get a buy-in from the council for an action plan, okay?
Yeah, it sounds great.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't give you more thumbs up than I have to. I'd like to give you ten thumbs up. Because I think the connectivity of our community and supporting people to be active and walk and take their dog out and their kids out and get to know their neighborhood, you know, getting to know your neighbors, that's how you increase livability. It's how you increase community wellness. It's all good. It's all part of a major plan that says that we care about our neighbors and our streets and our blocks. And that's, that's how you kind of rediscover your own community. It's not about the visitors. I mean, sure, visitors might enjoy it, but it's like, there's lots of people that live here that don't know about these routes that are out there, you know, just old timers do. So I just, I can't say enough good things about the works the Parks Commission's doing, and I look forward to, you know, moving forward with this, whatever steps it takes to get this thing on the books. Thank you for bringing it to the council, Doug.
And the, the, the unanswered question is, which council meeting we will be ready, that, that commission will be ready for, will it be the first one in December or the second one in December? So if we can have that flexibility to, when we're, when we're finished, to say we're finished, can we get on to the, the next agenda? That would be great. That, that's what I'm asking the council at this point. And I agree with Jenny, the work that's been done is phenomenal. They've walked and re-walked and walked, and it's, a lot of it is on sidewalks now to, to that point, and then the trails take off through the parks and end up back here. It has, I think the simplification has changed from a figure eight to one big loop around the area with the hub being down at this area in the city center. So that's kind of like, one of the, that's one of the approaches. We'll find out from the, from the, all the work that the Parks and Trails Commission has done, and how they, how they work through their dilemma of making a solid, good presentation. And not to, not to say that their last presentation was not solid and good, it just, it, it asked.
A lot of questions.
Asked a lot of questions, right.
They had a lot of.
So hopefully they'll, hopefully they'll have answers for every question that you ask, in a sense. And I want to make other comment, while, while I have the frame here. I'd like, I'd like to say that our, our last presenter was very timely. I lost Comcast about five days ago, and our whole entire home is run by Comcast. I mean, our security system, our phones, internet, the whole deal. That's why I'm down here at City Hall today. I'm using the Wi-Fi down here because it isn't functioning at my home. And is this the first time that that's happened? No, it's about the fourth or fifth time that this has happened. And so I've been without service for four or five days. I'm paying four thousand dollars a year for that service. It's a bundled service, and that's a lot of money to pay for a service that you don't have, and.
We will have them in front of us for a franchise agreement next meeting, so you'll be able to have somebody in charge and, that will probably be a little bit of a lengthy discussion as well, I imagine, so. I would definitely encourage council to look at their homework on this coming up. As far as looking at the franchise agreement with Comcast, this is a good reminder for you guys to really look at it. There are a couple of things that disturb me in what they're going to be proposing. And just look at it. I haven't seen it in writing yet, but just look at it. We'll all have that in front of us, so. That is a good reminder, Doug.
Yeah, well, thanks, and thanks, council, for allowing the Parks Commission to do a little further study. They're kind of a little frustrated with me, I'm sure, but, you know, I, I think a really, a really dynamite presentation is coming forth, and this is going to be exciting, because it's going to open up a lot of projects, smaller projects for trail connectivity, like Counselor Carlson was referring to, and little minor trails linking into the big hub of the urban trail.
Sure. When do you guys meet, when do you guys meet next, Doug?
Well, we're going to meet, the, that committee is meeting on a, on, on a virtual, and we haven't got that set up yet. Maybe Carmen has, but I've been out of the loop because I don't have my computer, and I have to come down here to get my emails and get, you know, anything else, so.
I'll, I'll probably push it to the third, third, Wednesday of December, because the, you'll have to have it in, in a week and a half for us to post.
Yeah, okay, third weekend in, and that sounds good. Last, our last meeting of the year.
Yep, the sixteenth, December sixteenth.
I appreciate that, thank you. I will pass that on to, to those folks, and we'll get our virtual going, and I, I'll give you a heads up when that, we are having that virtual, so if you want to be involved, you most certainly can.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Okay, let's talk about the strategic action plan updates.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few updates for you. One update is that at one of the future December meetings, Jacob, Jenny, and myself will be presenting some ideas for the facade improvements at the utility building and court building. As you know, we had the request from the planning commission to at least redo the windows that are up there. And so we talked about doing some additional facade improvements, so we'll be coming back to you in December with some cost estimates and pictures and ideas to talk to you about, and kind of get your ideas of how much your appetite is for doing improvements.
I know when it comes to historical stuff, it's not cheap when you're trying to renovate a building.
No, and it's kind of, I, I will say it's very dependent, and there's a lot of options. Depending on, you know, the future use of that building as well, that plays into that as well. So we can talk about that in more detail when Jacob and Jenny and us have more information for you.
Sure.
The other thing I wanted to let you know is that we still have the bathroom cleanings that are being done by a third-party company that was hired from E2C. She's hired a couple of people to do the bathrooms on a more regular basis than what our current staff is doing. Right now, that is a cost of about two thousand dollars per month, and those go, the cleanings go through the end of the year, and that, that two thousand dollars is reimbursable through COVID funds from the state. But after December, those funds do not become reimbursable. So I wanted to preface you now that we may need to have a discussion on whether you want to continue to have a third-party company cleaning all the, and these are the cleanings that are happening in all the restrooms in the parks around the city. So whether you want to continue paying that cost, whether you want to have it done internally only, whether you want to close bathrooms, whatever that option may be. I'm sure Sue Nelson and our new Public Works Director Mohammed will be available for that conversation as well. He should have a little bit more time under his sleeve and can give you some of his thoughts on the future as well. So I just want to get you kind of forward of that discussion coming up in late December or January. And then the last strategic update thing I wanted to talk about just briefly was a little bit more of an explanation on one of the strategic items that we have on our list, which is Explore Video Communication Channel. And I believe it was Counselor Carlson that brought this item up to look at, and I believe the intention of this item was to look at the TV channel that we are using to see how we could more broadly or appropriately. that we are using to see how we could more broadly or appropriately better use that station. And but I wanted to get the counselor's recommendation on how you see that item moving forward. And you can think about it today, and we can come back to it at a later meeting or tonight if you'd like. Like I said, my assumption was that it was about the TV channel. We did the community survey and found that the TV channel is very, very little used. And so I didn't want to waste a lot of time of staff and see Counselor Carlson moving her finger. So I will inter
Um, I my primary concern, excuse my dog, he's a little excited for Zoom, is people that don't know Facebook right now have a hard time engaging with our meetings. Not everybody is tech savvy. And we had talked a long time ago when before COVID, when we were still in the building on what it would mean to be able to stream to our website. Because every time we go live, people should be able to watch.
Correct. And I will update you that we actually can livestream to our website now. We just have not set it up officially. But we do have a service now that is $7 a month that streams whenever we stream to Facebook, it streams to the web.
Is that voice in the background?
I do not know.
Okay, I keep hearing background noises, like other dialogue. I just, my concern is, is that not everybody does social media. And you can't really, you know, I want to make sure we're not leaving anybody out. And we know the Comcast channel 29 or whatever it was didn't always hit everybody. But it's like, people should be able to Google City of St. Helens and see that we're live making an announcement, I would think, not just for our meetings, but when we have a burn update or when we have a state of emergency to have a real place, not Facebook, to issue those types of addresses, or if something's ongoing, like we have a flood watch to have something official that's not social media. Just looking at all of the allegations of fake news and scams and half fake truths that a lot of people are really wanting just the facts, no commentary, just the announcements. And I just would like to see if we put a lot of work into updating our website. And it's like, that's a lot of investment. I just think that the technology is there to utilize that fully to really keep our citizens informed without wasting rooms of paper and postage of mailing things. Because as soon as you print to paper something, it's outdated before it ever reaches their house. And it's like, if somebody wants to know what's going on with a storm warning or a power outage, that they could go to the city and know that we would always have the most current information available to them.
Gotcha. So if I can make a small recommendation, and you guys can talk about this amongst yourselves. But we have another item on the strategic plan that is a communication strategy. It's really kind of a big vision communications. What does it all mean? How do we do stuff? Press releases, videos, Facebook, social media, all that kind of encompasses. From hearing what you were saying, Counselor Carlson, I see that more diving into that communications plan instead of its own kind of strategic item. So I would like to suggest if we got rid of that communication or that the communication channel item and combined that with the communications plan. And I know Crystal is our communications manager has been on maternity leave for a while, and she's just starting to come back part time. But we anticipate kind of gearing that communication strategy up when she's more back at a full time level. So we can encompass a lot of what you just said.
Yeah, I mean, that's the biggest complaint that we have in the community is people are not informed. So the more way we can wrap around. And, you know, because not everybody takes a newspaper, not everybody's on Facebook. And it's like, if we have the investment in Crystal and the investment in a website, we need to be getting all of our mileage out of it.
No, Matt, it wouldn't hurt to actually review that strategic action plan because I we did actually put that in a separate aisle because we felt that it but it was vitally important to get the message out. I remember that discussion when we started revamping our council goals. And which rolled into our strategic action plan. So we probably should have an update on that. And a refresher with all the current council too, just for a revived, you know, kind of memorized jog the memory. And that way, when the new comes in, we can also know what was the discussion around that. So I think this is a kind of part of the old and the new. We need to do this soon.
Yep. So if if Mayor, if you'd like, I can set have Kathy put that on an agenda item for December at one of the meetings.
Yeah, even if it's an hour Zoom in the evening or something, you know, or hour and a half just to recap, re-go over.
Just a as potential specific goal setting meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
And it may be, it may be affluent and I'll I'll probably work with Rachel on this as well, since she's been talking with some of the incumbents that are coming in. And whether we do kind of a small one in December and then another one in January with the two new people that are coming in. But I'll work with Rachel, Kathy and John and everybody to to look at.
I I'm just thinking of the smoothest transition to and also knowing so there is no jogging the memory of, you know, where we're at. So.
Yep. Yep. Okay, that's all I had.
All right. Are you filling in for John?
I am. I would actually like to introduce Mohammed to the group. I'm going to ask him to start his video if he's happens to be sitting by his laptop right now. Hey, Mohammed, are you there?
Yes, I am. I have this really cool camera turned off on the laptop. So.
You're looking good there, Mohammed.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Very exciting first meeting. Thank you all for your time, Council. I'm Mr. Mayor and Matt for the introduction. Very exciting time. I had the chance to already meet, I would say, 90% of the City of St. Helens employees, probably 10% somewhere. I haven't the public works maybe field or elsewhere. So so far, so good. Great environment, great team. And I'm looking forward to start working with everyone. And seems like we got a lot of projects to go. I'm still kind of familiarizing myself a little bit with the basically the culture and the type of projects and the priorities and really looking forward to start tackling some big stuff that's going on now. I'm here for any questions or resources for anyone in the entire agency, obviously. So please don't hesitate to reach out. I got my phone numbers up and running and my emails good to go. Matt has been a great assistant, will kind of introduce me to a lot of the stuff. And Darren from IT has been also wonderful to set me up really quickly. So we're live and we're ready to go.
Excellent.
Yes.
Welcome to the team. And yeah, yeah, John's out this week. You come in.
Yeah. Timing, you know, I figured. Yeah, this this is a good time. I mean, I really contemplated coming at the beginning of the year, but it's a good time. Hopefully, I thought things will be slow with where it's an opportunity to really kind of get together and just try to get my feet wet a little bit before things kick up the beginning of the year. So.
Yes, that is a good opportunity. You're absolutely right because we're going to be gangbusters. I mean, we got a lot of stuff going on. As always, you know, with every city, we're always pushing the water in the sewer. But yes.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, if anyone have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. I think you grilled me pretty good in the interview. So.
Yes.
Where do I find, where do I find you during the day?
Good question, Counselor Lopez. I've been really sheltered around the agency, really downstairs, upstairs, construction arena and the parks. You really can find me anywhere. I'm just jumping around, finding quiet spot for now, just to kind of collect myself. But currently, I'm sitting in Crystal, I believe, Crystal office at the front of the city hall.
Okay.
Yeah, this is kind of my stationary until the construction upstairs gets completed, which December 17th, I believe, is the due date. Then I'll be migrating back up there.
Mohammed, I'd like to welcome you aboard Public Works and Parks. And the Parks Commission is very anxious to meet you. And so be ready for that. Okay?
Yes, absolutely, Counselor President Morton. I I look forward to meet them.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
All right. Well, again, yes, welcome to our team and look forward to working with you and getting to know you. And we've got a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Matt, back to you.
That is everything I have to report. We do have executive session for real property transactions. And Bill from Jordan Ramus is here to help out with that during the executive session.
Okay, so.
You keep it on this line?
So we were gonna adjourn, but we are going to be going to executive session or S1926620E.
Are we gonna, are we gonna take the 10 minute break now?
And H and that's yes, we're going to go ahead and adjourn and take a 10 minute and then we'll start our executive session at just before three.
Okay, super.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned.
Do we need Aaron to come? I'm not sure what the topic is going to be.
It's about the church property.